Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. The city manager, you have responses to the previous questions raised at the last workshop?
Yes ma'am, I do. You should have a letter in front of you dated February 11, 2013. This is a response to several questions that have arisen at this table at your prior workshops. The first question is, has resurfacing for the southeast 30th viaduct been programmed? If so, could a specific date and details be provided? The answer is yes, it's programmed in the CIP. There is a possibility that because of the high need for this particular facility...
I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you, does that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. My apologies. We're talking about the southeast 30th Street viaduct and the programming in the CIP. The project is programmed. It's scheduled for construction in 2016, 2017. It does rank high enough in the state system that we think there's a possibility of getting state funding, so we will do that. The timing is it has to be constructed after southeast connector is completed below, so you don't mess up the construction at that time. Yes, it's in the program. Next question, could a copy of the Public Art Foundation ordinance be provided? Council would like to review the minimum amount of funding outlined in the ordinance as well as review the percentage of funding related to the CIP. I think this question arose in the context of the amount of funds that we're allocating to the Public Art Foundation program. The ordinance sets out a goal of one and one-half percent of the amount of general obligation funds appropriated for the capital improvement program. In the past, and I'll look at Scott, the total amount of GO bonds is roughly 20 million or 25 million, so you're talking, that goal would generate about $250,000 or $300,000 a year, something in that range. Our allocation has been around $100,000 a year, so it doesn't quite meet that goal. But I would point out that both the ordinance and the agreement we have with the Public Art Foundation characterizes the goal as, or this commitment as a goal, not as a mandatory requirement. I'd also note that although the language here talks about a percentage of GO bonds, it is reasonable in my mind to have us consider other funding sources. I've talked to the Public Art Foundation in the past about utilizing federal funds, using our good efforts as the city to help them manage that process to see if federal funding can be achieved, or perhaps other funding sources locally because of the stress that our capital improvement program is under. Excuse me. Item, the next question had to do with the 2012 tree mitigation numbers. You're aware that we have an annual report that's the City Tree Replacement Fund. A copy of that report is attached to you. To answer the question about the numbers, here are some numbers. In the year 2012, there were about 1,584 trees that were removed. A total of 2,944 trees were planted during that period of time. At the present time, the City Tree Replacement Fund has a working balance of about $222,000. This particular program or account is managed by the city forester in the public works department. However, public works and parks do work closely together on determining the location and the manner which those trees are planted. Next question, does the city of Des Moines have a forestry plan? If so, could a summary of progress to date be provided? We do not currently have an urban forest master plan. Our estimate of the cost of preparing such a plan is about $500,000. However, I would point out a couple of things. We had a community forestry workshop this past fall that was hosted by Tree Des Moines. Our city staff was involved. I think some council members were involved as well. There's clearly interest in doing this. I note in the response here that the city should be part of a community effort and would consider some limited funding to use as a match of seed funding to start such a community-wide funding to do a plan like this. Councilmember Moore has provided an example of the Pittsburgh Urban Forest Master Plan, which was funded through grants. We think a similar kind of approach where you use the city dollars to match other dollars that might be generated from either federal sources or local sources or donated funds to undertake that kind of a study would be appropriate. And we're suggesting that as a starting point, we work with a local group to see if we can put that together. The idea of an urban forest master plan for trees is perfectly appropriate, and we would suggest that we work towards that goal. Next question, council has requested a list of any funding that is predicated upon grants or other private funding regarding the CIP. This gets back to an issue that Councilman Coleman has raised in the past about the extent to which projects that receive CIP or GO funding from the city that also are predicated upon receiving private dollars. The question is, are those private dollars in place at the time that you approve the issuance of the bonds? And the answer is that in recent years, we've actually provided a report to council which indicates the extent to which those private dollars have in fact been placed. And our policy is if they are not available, if they've not been pledged and in our accounts, then we don't proceed with the project. We've listed here in the response a number of projects that are GO-funded that also are predicated upon other funding outside that, the GO funding, so that our goal, of course, is to make sure that all those dollars are in fact available. Two more questions. You might recall the discussion we had at the last meeting about the Greater Des Moines Partnership. The council asked us to work with the partnership to develop a five-year contribution plan that would establish performance standards and a monitoring system. We are in the process of putting that plan together, and we'll come back to this council with an agreement to implement that. Okay. Can the staff provide an analysis of cost and advantages for the green infrastructure staff training? This question arose when we were doing the report on the sustainability progress to date. There are two ways that the green infrastructure training can occur in our judgment. One is that we've sent people to the training in Shepherdstown. Mr. Moore and the mayor are both, the mayor, I think both of them have gone. We've sent other staff people as well to this. The cost per trip to do that is around $2,750, so just to use a number, if we were to send four more people to that, it would be about $11,000. The alternative approach is to do a seminar, actually based here in Des Moines, where the instructors from the Shepherdstown program actually come here and conduct a seminar over a period of a couple, three days. In that instance, and we've begun to do some work putting this together, there would be the capacity to train up to 60 individuals. If you had 60 individuals and the cost for the training was in the 20,000 to 25,000 dollar range, the per person cost would be up to $416 per person. So those are the two options that we're evaluating. One is to actually do the training onsite here. We can do a lot more people in that arrangement. Or if you go to Shepherdstown and actually benefit from the program there at their site, the cost is the number I mentioned a moment ago, about $2,700. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that concludes the response to questions. I'd be happy to answer any additional ones that you might have.
Does anybody have anything at the moment? All right, let's move right on to the neighborhood notification.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. Laura Graham, Assistant to the City Manager. I wanted to take a quick moment this morning and walk us through the neighborhood notification recommendations that came forward out of a process that you had requested staff work with neighborhood leaders and to come up with some recommendations on how we could improve how we currently work with our neighborhood associations. So back in July, we were requested to come up with a neighborhood notification process and review that process with neighborhood leaders and submit these recommendations back to council. In August and September, staff came together, did a little bit of brainstorming, and we came up with some recommendations. And then over the course of October and November, staff was able to sit down and work with a group of neighborhood leaders and come up with some stronger recommendations based on the framework created by staff. Just to give you a quick look here, here are the individuals who are involved in this process. As you can see, we had three of our council members, several community members, and then city staff. And I know we have some neighborhood leaders here today and also some of the staff that participated, so I wanted to make sure that we could thank them for their time. They were very helpful in this process. When we set out to do this, we wanted to make sure we could narrow the scope of the recommendations, so we put together a framework for some guiding principles, primarily making sure that these recommendations could fit within our existing current financial situation. We could abide by our state requirements. We could enhance current communications and notification processes and assist in building awareness of processes with citizens and neighborhood associations. And then finally, maintain development-friendly standards to remain competitive with our metro So we broke this down into two phases. Phase one are recommendations we felt could be initiated here within the first 90 days if this is something that council feels is something they'd like to move forward with. The first one here is that we'd like to provide better access to information via our website. We have a great tool within our website, but we also feel that there are some opportunities for improvement in terms of how our citizens can access information on our website. An example of making these improvements would include taking a look at locating public notifications all on one spot within the internet, within the website, so that we could direct people to that site as those projects roll out. Another one that we have that we'd like to enhance is to create meeting calendars. We have one currently, but not all of our meetings are on there. So could we add some of the extra meetings that are out there? You know, city council meetings, city workshop meetings, also take a look at plan and zoning, zoning board of adjustment, et cetera. And then also take a look at any of our recognized neighborhood associations and including their meeting dates out on our calendar so that residents have another opportunity to find out where that information is and where they meet. Another one here is to enhance our existing subscription service. This is a really great tool. I don't know if all of you are aware of this, but we have a subscription service tool out there, so if a resident wants to sign up and learn about what's on the council agenda, they can, an email push is sent out right ahead of time for all of these meetings so residents can go out, take a look, and keep informed. We liked this opportunity and thought maybe we could enhance it by adding other board and commission meetings out there. This is something that is a little bit of a shift for some of our staff members. Currently, they'll print out agendas for some of these boards or commission meetings. This would allow us to put the individuals that they print those out for, email those out for, onto an email distribution list through this service, and then it'll automatically push out, so it would save some time for staff. The other great thing about this item here is that it allows any resident to sign up for them, so the more items we have out there, the easier it is for our residents in our neighborhoods to keep informed. So the second set of phase one recommendations would be taking a look at standardizing our existing notification process and provide summaries and a matrix about what we do. We have a draft of this. It's been created for development-related projects, but we'd like to expand that and take a look at other processes that are involved across our departments and how they interact with neighborhood associations and how they interact with the public in general. At this point, we have, you know, departments that have their processes, but they're not widely known across the departments, and sometimes that can get confusing for residents. So if we can enhance or create a matrix that allows neighborhood associations to take a look at what point they're involved in a project or a process, it'll be easier for them to understand our existing processes. The next one here is to take a look at our public hearing notice procedure and really identify a need to increase the 250-foot distance, take a look at current fee schedules, mailing alternatives, and then, you know, the potential for onsite signage. This is an item that has come up, I know you're all well familiar with it, at the council meetings we have on hearings in terms of not being notified far out enough from a site. So we want to take a look at some potential alternatives to enhance that notification process, but not to necessarily prohibit the development within the community. The next one here is looking at simplifying the language on existing documents. I put in postcards here in parentheses because that's what most residents receive when they check their mail for any zoning change. We have a lot of challenges where maybe we have too much information on the card. It can get overwhelming for residents. Maybe it's the same item they've received multiple times, and they're confused as to the why. So what we'd like to do is take a look at simplifying that language, maybe providing a link to a website that explains it in more detail, but of course, having to make sure we're well within the state requirements there, but we'd like to take a look at some of those opportunities to simplify that language. And then finally, in phase one, we'd like to take a look at building neighborhood association awareness through the city source newsletter. As you all know, this is a quarterly newsletter that goes out to every household in the city. And what we'd like to do is find a way to notify our residents about neighborhood associations in an equitable way. This is a sneak preview of what you'll see on the cover of the city source newsletter that'll be going out here this quarter. And what this provides is just an image, a map, for all of the neighborhood associations in Des Moines with a link, a hyperlink to their website, so they can go ahead and click on that and find more information about where they live, whether it's in a recognized neighborhood, and when that neighborhood meets. And this is a tool that's already out on the website. We're just bringing it to the attention of our neighborhoods. So then looking at phase two, these are processes that we'd like to take a look at, making some changes to, and coming back with some recommendations here over the course of the next 12 months. And the first one is taking a look at better defining our expectations of neighborhood associations. Our neighborhood associations play a vital role in the way that we work as government, and what we'd like to do is enhance our relationship with them. So if we can take a moment, sit down, and do some evaluations on how we could better enhance that relationship, figure out what it is we need from neighborhoods to be more effective, and figure out what they need from us to be more effective, I think we'll build a stronger relationship in that process. One of the things that we'd like to do with this is make sure that once we've made these changes, that we sit down and have trainings with neighborhood associations, just to make sure that they're informed on what we're looking for and make sure that everyone's on the same page. The next one here is to take a look at improvements to the city's cable channel. This came up quite a bit in our meeting, and what we'd like to do is look at opportunities to partner with local area TV stations, MediaCom, the Des Moines Independent School District, and others to really enhance access to our programming. We have some great cable TV programming that's on Channel 7, but it's currently only accessible online through our YouTube channel. You can stream it directly through our webpage, but you can also only access it on TV on Channel 7, and that presents a challenge for a lot of our residents. So then the next one here would be make employee email addresses accessible to the public. This is something that currently, if somebody doesn't know your middle name and you're an employee within the organization, they have no idea how to get ahold of you. So what we'd like to take a look at doing is standardizing our email addresses or just publishing our database of employee emails. That way, if somebody has an issue that come up, they can more easily address that directly with the employee versus having to go through multiple people to get to who they're trying to reach. We had a couple of other recommendations that came up that kind of fit outside of our current resources, but I think they're important ones, so we wanted to notate them to make sure that you were aware of them. One was, this came out of a staff recommendation, was looking at a GIS mapping component that shows all of the proposed development sites linked to council action. This would be handy for residents who are looking at moving into an area, people who are knowledgeable about an area but want to know what's going on with a site. We would be able to, you know, pull up a map, and they could click on it and find out more information. This is a little more staff-intensive, and we currently lack staff resources to make that happen, but it's something that we'd like to, you know, keep in the back of our minds if there's another opportunity long-term. And then finally, the last one is, it's also looking at improvements to the city's cable channel, but here we'd like to review potential to add additional city-related content to the channel. There's some concern at this point that maybe we have too much non-government-related information on the channel, and they, you know, our group here felt they'd like to see more. And of course, creating these programs also means adding extra dollars to a budget, and at this point, we're not able to move forward making those improvements. But it's something that I think is important, and we'd like to, we'd like to address down the road if that's a possibility. So our next steps here are to begin work on recommendations if council finds that these recommendations are worthwhile to move forward with, and then provide letters to council as we implement these recommendations, and then courtesy copy the committee that worked so strongly with us to create these, just make sure that they're kept informed. That concludes my presentation. I'm not sure if you have any questions, but I'd be happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Skip?
I just have a comment. It's been noticeable since last summer that staff have been listening to these concerns. I appreciate in the blue letters under applicable neighborhoods that that's all being listed now. I would like to see directly under that response from these neighborhoods, because at this time, you've got to read through all the planning and zoning minutes to see if there was response.
Okay.
And other than that, I think you're on the right track with all this, and I appreciate it.
Great. Very good. Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's move right on to the Principal Financial Campus renovation presentation.
Mayor, county members of the council, Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Before I get started, I want to point out a couple guests in our audience today. Scott Cahill and Ralph Uker with Principal Financial Group, and David Moss with the Greater Des Moines Partnership, who've been our partners on moving this deal forward. And also with David's office, Tim Leach and Mike Swayze have been integral in moving this exciting project forward with Principal and getting it through the city and state systems, and I think we've got a great partnership moving forward here. A quick project introduction. Principal Financial Group currently has 6,000 employees in almost 2.5 million square feet downtown. It's spread amongst a number of different buildings. They kind of lack the really identifiable campus that a few of the other large employers have downtown, but they're working to fix that, and that's part of this project also. But 2.5 million, it's a big number. I think a lot of people don't realize just how much space they have downtown. Principal's employment base over the years has been shifting, and this is something I've really learned over the last month or two working with Principal. They've shifted from a transaction-based company to a knowledge-based workforce, and I'll give you a little bit of the difference of that. What these knowledge, new knowledge-based workers are, are a significant number of IT workers, almost 1,200 IT workers downtown with Principal, accounting staff, asset management, actuarial sciences, and legal. What those new functions, those new knowledge-based functions provide for downtown is there, it's a higher-paid, higher-skilled workforce than Principal used to have with their transaction-based, where as a transaction-based worker primarily, as Ralph has explained, is given a stack of papers, and you process the claims, and you get another stack the next day, and you go through those claims. It's a different type of employee. A lot of that's being automated now. A lot of those functions are being taken care of through the IT functions, and as their business model has evolved, they've been adding a lot of these new knowledge-based workers, which bring a new skill set to downtown. So the project scope, why is that important? Why is that changing workforce important? This new workforce requires a different physical environment, and if any of you have had the opportunity to tour particularly Wellmark's new campus, or Nationwide, or even Aviva out in West Des Moines, or John Deere Credit in Johnston, brand-new facilities really built around a knowledge worker. And that space that's required for a knowledge worker is different. Those people demand a different physical space. In Principal's campus, the physical campus was built around the transactional workers. So an example, particularly when you tour Wellmark's campus, you see lots of little breakout areas for employees to go have little impromptu meetings, two or three or four people sitting down. They have kind of a lot of little coffee shop-type atmospheres inside the campus, little breakout facilities, very flexible workspaces where you can grab your laptop or your iPad and go sit in front of a window in a soft chair and answer some emails or do some work rather than being chained to your cubicle or your office and your desk. So it's a new way that employees want to work. And currently, only 2% of Principal's workspace is that type of flexible collaboration space. The new plans that they have will convert that to about 18% collaboration space. Principal's looking at a phase project. This is phase one that we're bringing forward to you today. $238 million in phase one, a total project scope that could reach 400 million when they hit the entire campus. What are they going to do with the, for 238 million? It's pretty dramatic. It's all done to their existing infrastructure, repairs and maintenance to their current facilities, tremendous interior upgrades even on buildings like the Z Building that are just under, just 18, 19 years old. You're going to see a tremendous reinvestment into the interiors of those buildings, building modernization, sustainability. Principal's already experimented with one floor and 801 Grand converting it to all LED lighting, and they intend to do that to their entire campus. IT improvements and employee moves and consolidations. This is an important thing that I'm going to stop and pause on for the downtown office market. Principal's employees currently occupy about 2/3 of 801 Grand, the office tower, which is the premier address in the state. Through all of these renovations, Principal is going to move their employees out, at the end of this, their employees will be out of the middle third of that building. So that'll open up that large block of floors for new tenants downtown. It's still the premier address people want, even in the recession, people still wanted to move to 801 Grand. That's where all of the top accounting and brokerage and financial services firms want to move. And it'll also give large blocks within that building, so instead of filling it up a floor at a time or 15,000 square feet at a time, we can go out and work with Principal and seek large Class A office users that might need two, three, four, or five floors and get some big new employers, either new to downtown or allow some existing employers to expand in 801 Grand. That's a real important shift in that building. And then as part of phase one also is a new Skywalk Bridge across 8th Street that would connect to the Z Building. Principal's system at that north end of downtown is a private system, so this would be a Skywalk Bridge that would be paid for and constructed by Principal. The locations and the timeline, there's three buildings they're going to start on in this phase. The Z Building, 801 Grand, and 711 High. And 711 High is kind of obscured by the city's 7th and Grand parking garage right now. It's a beautiful 80-year-old art deco building that they're going to really breathe some new life into, and is really where the most dramatic transformation is going to take place. Work will begin later this year, and it'll be about a four- or five-year project on this phase of the project. So what are the benefits that we see to the city of Des Moines for this project? This is an incredible commitment, Principal, to retain Principal's workforce base downtown. We've all seen every few years, there seems to be some little rumble out in the industry that Principal's going to get acquired by a larger firm, and we kind of sweat that they might leave. This is a tremendous commitment to spend 238 and up to 400 million in later phases and reinvesting in the downtown, and really shows us their commitment to keep their workforce down here. And also, it's a bit of an opportunity for us to reassert ourselves and reinforce ourselves as a worldwide leader in finance and insurance. Principal is a huge part of that and always has been, but this is one where we can, I think we have some bragging rights here with this reinvestment. And then it's a demonstration of Principal's corporate stewardship in their downtown real estate. This is going to make them more competitive and increase the assessed values of their buildings without a doubt. They could also limp along for a while probably with the real estate they have, but it would really put a drag on that part of downtown. And this is a, this corporate stewardship that they're showing hopefully will translate into some spinoff development in the area also, and we're excited about the opportunities that that might bring. So what are the city's commitments? There's a pretty standard economic development package that we put together. We know that there's going to be new tax increment. The difficult thing on this is because there's not a new building being built, it's difficult for us and Principal to calculate what the assessor's office is going to tie to that as new value. to that as new, as new value. So rather than doing a fixed dollar amount, and you'll see in your blue letter for today's council action, that what we've structured is a, an incentive package that equals 50% of any new tax increment. So regardless of what that number is, regardless of what the new assessment increase is, we're, we're going to calculate the grant on a fixed percentage rather than a fixed dollar amount, which we think is, it's, it's best for both us and Principal in structuring it.
Will there be any minimums?
There won't be, we're not planning a minimum assessment agreement. So if, if, and if the assessor picks up, you know, zero value in a building or on the campus, then the, then the incentive is zero. If they pick up 20 million in, in new, new tax assessment, then the grant will be based on a $10 million grant back. So we've, we've kept it pretty open. That also gives Principal some incentive to finish buildings as fast as they can, because once the, once the meter starts ticking on the incentives, the 15-year period of grants starts. And so if buildings are delayed, then the incentives would also be delayed, too. We have a sustainability incentive of $25,000 per year for 10 years for each certified building. They have not yet decided if they're going to pursue LEED certification on every building. They may also pursue a different measuring stick, such as Green Globes or, or other incentive, or other green sustainability measurement programs that are out there. We're going to work with them, and the devil's a bit in the details on that. We'll get it sorted out in the, in the development agreement, working with their staff and their architects on just how they want to do that. They are, they are committed to sustainability, it just depends on if they're going to actually certify all the buildings. 801 Grand makes a lot more sense to certify as a LEED building because they'll be out looking for third-party tenants, a little less so to spend that cost on actually pursuing the certification on their own or occupied buildings. We've suggested some KEOA improvements. As you exit I-235 off of KEOA, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing front door to downtown. We've kind of forgotten KEOA. We'd like to take another look at KEO, either through our own planning departments with, with Aaron Olson Douglas's help in economic development, or, or seek out a, a third-party urban planner to take a look at it. So we'd like to do a corridor study from 235 down into Principal's campus, so around Park Street or so, and see what, what improvements we can make there. We're not looking at a full-scale Fluor, East Village, or Ingersoll streetscape, but just how do we enhance that area? And then are there any development opportunities in that corridor that, that we might be able to capitalize on?
So when you identify the corridor, are you going from 235 on KEO to the Principal campus?
Uh huh. And maybe even come on down, like, to Grand Avenue as you kind of flow into, into Principal's campus? So it'll be in that vicinity, and we'll probably go, you know, a block or two on either side of it and create a, create a boundary area. And then that'll be, we have a, we have a lot of actions we're going to have to bring back to you, this being one of them, and when we identify how, what we're going to do with this, this study area. And we have some time on this. I mean, Principal's project is, is many, many years, and we're going to be phasing things in that we're going to do over time to meet their, their time commitments, which is a great segue to what is really the city's biggest contribution to this project, and that's the 7th and Grand parking garage. Engineering, our engineering department and consultants have estimated that the remaining lifespan on that garage is through 2019. From a structural standpoint, it just won't make any sense to continue, financial sense to continue patching that garage and fixing it. So we have about six years, and we'll need to replace it. That was the reason, one of the reasons that we bought the former YWCA site, because we knew we could then have control of a whole block when the state did come. So Principal's planned improvements for 711 High include raising the Skywalk that goes from this garage into that building to the third level. So that is really a trigger. Doesn't make a lot of sense to make major modifications to the parking ramp to accept a new Skywalk if we're going to be tearing the parking ramp down in a couple of years. So it makes sense to go forward and accelerate the demolition and replacement of that ramp to match Principal's timeline. This 711 High is the last building renovation planned for this phase, so it, it works pretty well. We don't have to tear down the ramp tomorrow, but we have laid out a timeline of what we think we need to do to get the, get the ramp replaced. We haven't, we've been talking, and we think that this ramp can be more than just a parking ramp. We think there's opportunities for retail, potentially opportunities for mixed use above, probably multifamily, or office, or hotel, whatever the market is, is ready to bear at this time. Certainly multifamily is a, is a, in high demand right now. So we'd like to spend this year, 2013, developing a project scope, we'd bring it back to the city council, of what we think we could do with a public-private partnership on that ramp, how that, on that site, how it might be structured. Develop a scope and an RFP this year. Issue the RFP as soon as we're ready. If we're ready in July, we'll issue it then, but by, by the end of, be done with the process by the end of '13. Issue an RFP, select a developer, and, and put together a financing package and all the contracts in '14, which would mean you'd have construction, demolition and construction happening 2015 to 2017, trying to get that timing married up correctly with Principal and their parking, and their 711 High improvements, so that as we're coming out of the ground with a new ramp and a mixed-use development, they're ready to set the steel on their Skywalk bridge, and everything just works harmoniously.
Matt, Rick has come in.
Yes.
Matt used the word incentive or assistance for the Principal project. I might suggest you think about this one just a little bit differently. This is a project we know we have to do.
Oh, yes.
The project is at the end of its useful life, as Matt has already mentioned. And frankly, Principal's investment gives us the opportunity, I think, to do more and better with that garage. So I, I'm not so, so sure this is something we're doing for them, as, as, maybe it's more of them doing something for us in this instance, because I think it opens up some doors to redo that garage in a way that adds tax space, and frankly, may offer some revenue streams that we haven't had in the past for it. So I think it's a good news piece of this whole story.
It is. It is a very good news piece. That's it. So Scott and Ralph are here. If you have any questions of them, or questions of me, I know we're excited about Principal's commitment to back into the downtown, and it's going to be a great few years of, of construction.
One of the things that you didn't talk about, and I know we have had some discussions about this, would be just the impact on jobs, not only for Principal, but the investment that they're making in their buildings. Have we looked at the overall impact?
Probably.
And that's something that, you know?
Construction jobs, Christine.
Construction jobs, and what that does within the community, because that is a huge project, and, you know, that's not something that we.
No, it is, and, and as we've, as we know, the $238 million of renovation project generates more jobs than $238 million of new construction, because that, that, there's a greater share, when you're renovating and building, a greater share of that budget is for labor than it is for materials versus new construction.
Sure, okay.
So there's certainly a higher number. I know that Principal's been talking to the, to the various trades about gearing up for this project. I don't know that we have a number, but we can, we can certainly give you some estimates of what that'll be.
No, that's fine. We don't need that now, but.
But it's, it's significant. It is significant.
Well, and the spinoff impact, too, about everything that's going on within that several block area is significant, so.
Right.
Okay. Great project.
Matt, great presentation. I don't know if the Principal people want to make a comment moving forward.
Yeah.
There is a HUD Green Building Academy this morning. I need to go do the welcome to that particular group. And there's a couple of staff members that I think that are going as well. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to our council member, Hallie Greason. He'll, he'll run the meeting from here.
Thank you.
All right. If we don't have anything else, Rick, I think we'll.
Maybe Scott.
Did, did you guys want to speak? You're welcome to speak. You don't feel obligated. Please.
Members of the council, good morning. I'm Ralph Uker. I'm the Senior Vice President of Human Resources and Corporate Services for Principal Financial Group. As you can tell, this is a very important project to our company and to our workforce here in Des Moines. It is a project that will be long-term. We have been engaged in trying to really think through what the project might look like for a period of about a year. I believe that while we're at a preliminary stage today with, with several more steps to go before we present it to our board for approval, that we've, we've looked through the project and really believe it would position us very well to attract and retain the kinds of knowledge workers that you heard described earlier well into the future here in our corporate headquarters in Des Moines. I would say that, you know, it's very appropriate for us to have the first step in sort of the approval process, being here with the city of Des Moines. And I want to thank you for your support, and I want to acknowledge the good collaboration we've had with the city manager and staff on helping us crystallize what the project could be. And again, we're very hopeful that if all of the different steps that need to happen yet here in the next few weeks and months are all approved, that we'd be in a position to begin work on the project sometime this summer. But again, my thanks to the city and to the staff. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great project. Thank you, sir. All right. At this point, we'll turn it over to the city manager and, and probably Scott to discuss the enterprise funding.
You've got it.
Good morning, councilmembers. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. This morning's topic is enterprise funds. This is the last of the budget presentations for this cycle. We have the, the four enterprise funds that, that operate our utilities, if you will, at the city. I want to thank the, the different staff from each of these areas for their assistance on this. I'm going to cover the high points with the budget items. They are available for any further detailed questions that you may have as we go through The first utility to address is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. So this, this service is to the 64,000 homes in Des Moines, picking up the solid waste, the recyclables, as well as the yard waste. This, this area also supports the cleanups of property, reducing illegal dumping in our community, especially in right-ofways. And it offers up the opportunity to dispose of the large household items that need to be disposed of. Additionally, the Solid Waste Enterprise collects at our park system, the airport, and the WRA. This operation has about 50 full-time staff members. As far as the budget numbers are looking, I've shown here the 2013 amended amounts, starting out with a fund balance of about $4.8 million. It's an incredibly healthy amount there. You may recall from last year, we are purposefully keeping a large balance for the eventual replacement of the trucks, the side loaded trucks. And, and so those are expensive purchases that will need to occur in about three years, potentially even starting some of those purchases two years from now. The annual revenues are strong, around the 12 million mark, and the expenditures are slightly less than that. So the solid waste utility is creating a surplus each year to add to that fund balance. With the financial health of the solid waste utility, there is no need for rate changes or increases. Again, the revenue stream is stable, producing the small surpluses, but there will be continuous effort to look at new truck arrangements. If there's efficiencies that can be gained, clearly the staff continue to, to review that. And again, there's a need for significant purchases on the truck replacements that, that will need to take place. I'm going to pause at each summary in case there's a question about each, any of the utilities, so I don't get all the way through.
Scott, question. With such a small increase in the fund balance projected for the year, how did we amass that $5 million some dollars in that balance there?
Well, I would say similar to this, small surpluses over time.
It'd take a long time to make $5 million at this rate.
Well, and I can, I can provide you that detail. If it was $200,000, $300,000 a year in, in the past, it's, it's possible it was even larger than that. And we can ask if anyone knows right offhand.
And I'd be curious, too, on, along the same lines, why we're projecting a decrease in '14 on the revenue, have we, if we, the rates are staying stable and we have the same number of properties?
Well, and I wouldn't get too caught up on the $10,000, you know, you're talking about the $12,500,000 down to $12,400,000. There's, there's an awful lot of estimates that go into that.
Okay.
I, I would definitely consider that as stable.
Okay.
Members of the council, my name is Pat Kazetsa, Director of Public Works. In response to the question on revenues, Mr. Mahaffey, the last rate increase for the Solid Waste Enterprise account was in 2003. And since that time, we've made significant improvements in both reducing the number of injuries through the automation of the operation, and, as well as expanding our services, like through the yard debris cart and the recycling. So that's all added to a continuous growth in our balance.
We must, must have had some much better years as far as maintaining a, a increase in reserve than what we're projecting for this next year then, because of only.
And that is true. I think some of the benefits that we've enjoyed now are realized.
Can I just try to add to that? I think maybe the phenomenon, Mr. Mahaffey, is that we haven't had rate increases for...
Since 2003.
Okay. So almost, almost 10 years. And I think back then with, with salary increases and whatnot, our expenses have generally gone up. So in the early years, the fund balance contributions were greater because our expenses were down. But as expenses have creeped up, they're still not, it's such a number that we have to increase the rates, and we're able to keep it okay. But I think that explains why the fund balances were accrued at a much higher rate in the early years.
That is correct.
The parking enterprise is next. We have seven parking garages that are operated at the city. One is the Park and Ride, 7th and Center. We have two parking lots, those are the surface lots, and about 4,000 parking meters throughout the city. We, this, this area is responsible for the funding of the parking enforcement, and it has about 15 staff members. You'll recall a year ago, I brought to you some financing options to refinance both the EMC lease on the garage there, as well as the bonds that we sold as taxable to allow for more flexibility with, with economic development. With those two financings, we were able to go from a negative $10,000 fund balance at the beginning of last year to just over $1 million. So you'll see the revenues at just over $8 million, and the expenditures at $7. The, the revenues are, have a small, very slight uptick to $8.2 million for next year, and you'll see that the expenditures at $8.6, which is more of a normalized, that includes the debt service payments that will now kick in with the new bonds. So the anomaly, if you will, here is that we were able to save on the expenditure side in 2013 with the considerably less debt payments for '13, purposely, again, to rebuild our cash, to have that flexibility in the cash.
Scott, Jimmy, just, just to add to this, the parking fund is one of those accounts that we're going to have to really focus on in the next several years. Our expenditures are going up because of the high vacancies downtown and the reduction in parking demand. The revenues have taken a hit in recent years. This is actually sort of good news that it's going up a little bit over the next year, but don't let that fool you. I think we're still facing some very challenging periods. We've got some old garages, as we just talked about a moment ago in the context of Principal. The Fifth and Walnut Garage is also an older one. So there's going to be some changes here, and it's going to be challenging for us. I, we're up to it, we'll get through this, but it's going to occupy some of your time and, and leadership over the next couple, three years to make those decisions. This is one we're really going to have to keep our eye on to make sure we keep it financially viable.
So Scott, is it, are you saying then that the increase in expenses for 2014 is directly attributable to the bond debt?
Well, I, I think the way to look at this is 2013 would have been a similar amount if it had not been for the refundings that we were able to bring just for that one year, the amount down.
Okay.
So it, it is a replacement. We, the new bonds issued were refunding of last. The other, and Rick makes a great point, the other challenge with the changes in the parking system is the transition that's, transitions that'll be necessary. Because again, you're talking about taking down some of the garages and the, the revenue stream, then we'll. stream then will go away for that particular garage as it's taken down. So we've got to be very thoughtful in how the transitions might work as we address one garage to the next.
Just one last point. You might know that engineering Jeb Brewer, Jennifer Bohack, and other staff people have worked on a parking study. We hired a firm, we went through that, we've got some results back on it. Frankly, some of the news with principal may alter that a little bit in terms of timing, not really in terms of the basic assumptions. So we do have a good basis to think about the future and some decisions, and we may want to bring some of that information back to you, you know, a couple, three months from now, to sort of give you a preview of the kinds of strategic decisions that you're going to have to make. But we do have a good start on that in terms of that parking study.
So Scott, would you say that the 2014 estimated expenditures are more typical of what we're going to experience in the future?
Yes, I would. Yes.
You know, one of the items, and I'll just throw this out, I know it's not without controversy, so I'll preface it with that, but as we're having the discussions and the debate around the parking garages, the question that I think we need to at least look at is, does it make sense for the city to be in that business? No? Or should we look at that being more of a private sector? And I know that the city being in the parking business helps us as we're dealing with economic development, which we would be, we'd have to ensure that we still had that capability. But I believe that we need to have that as one of the parallel reviews as we're looking at what our options are for parking garages.
Mrs. Sanders, councilmembers, it's a great point. We've looked at this several times in the past. You put your finger on the tough part of that. The tough part is that your parking system over the years has really been used as a way to maintain parking rates at a lower level in order to provide relatively inexpensive parking for the workers downtown. If you privatize it, the upward pressure on rates would be fairly dramatic, and so you would lose that ability to do it. But there are clearly some advantages if you can get out of the system. You do have some debt against it that would have to be paid off, and you have to take into account some of the things. It's not, it's not an idea that hasn't been considered. We have looked at it. We'll continue to look at all the options, including that, as we go forward. It's a very complicated proposition, as you suggested in your question.
I would just be curious, too, as to other communities that have done this, and I've not done any research on it, but I'd love to have information just so that, you know, we'd understand what the pros and cons are, pitfalls that might occur as a result of that.
In the middle ground, there might be a public-private partnership.
Correct.
Where we see that the needs are both public and private.
Your real issue is, you're always going to want to be in a position that you can have some control of the rates. You don't want the rates to go up, you know, to double what they are today because that would be very negative for the downtown. So if there's a way to do it where you can control the rates, which is really what you're after, but utilize some private sector efficiencies out of it, there may be some benefit to doing that.
You'll notice these numbers do not include the Park and Ride garage, and so we've included those separately here, showing the, about $1,003 a year in revenues. We've shown that as stable. And then the expenditures at about $1,004. So we do have some challenges also with the Park and Ride facility. The utilization numbers, quite honestly, are very low at this point. So whatever opportunities we can take, whether that be economic development or other arrangements to get more parkers into this facility would be helpful and clearly is on our radar. Of note here, those annual expenditures include the $680,000 a year that has contributed to DART, and that does have an impact on the Des Moines residents' tax rates. Now with the funding and the balances you see there, clearly it will be difficult to continue at that pace for many more years beyond '14. Again, another reason for concern that we need to address the Park and Ride as well.
Just as you're thinking about the use of the revenues that are generated by Park and Ride, remember that it has a transit tag to it. You can't use those revenues to do anything. They have to comply with federal law, which essentially requires that you spend it on transit-related activities, thus the contribution to DART as opposed to our general fund or other parking expenses.
So in summary, we're not looking at any rate changes in the parking system. Again, we continue to look at efforts to reduce cost, but admittedly, it's, for the most part, a privately run in the sense that we have a contract with ABM to manage those facilities. We have the parking study that Rick has mentioned that we'll use as a plan to move forward, especially with the next two garages, the Fifth and Walnut, Seventh and Grand. And then we need to continue to look at the Park and Ride facility as well. So the next enterprise fund is Stormwater. Again, this probably looks familiar to you. Not much of changes here. We have over 470 miles of storm sewers, 24 miles of levees, flood walls, and 31 pump stations that are associated with Stormwater. About 90 staff that are shared between the sanitary and WRA. And then there are 25 positions that are solely funded through the Stormwater enterprise. As far as the budget numbers, the beginning fund balance, about $2.2 million. The revenues you'll see there going up with the rate increases that were approved. There was a need to issue more debt that was done last fall. There will be significant, as you'll see in the next couple of slides here, significant needs for additional capital costs, and that is what is driving the higher expenditures, both in '14 and into '15 as well, and '16. And so there's, there is a small surplus in '13, and then again, relatively speaking, a more significant surplus in '14. What we see here, or what we envision beyond '14 would be a balanced budget in '15, and then '16 would probably would return to small deficits. So we've got to keep our eye out two years and three years with the Stormwater. And the nice thing about the Stormwater utility is the charges are on ERUs, so it's a flat rate per parcel, and so that's more stable. We're not subject to use, as we are in sanitary, where people's water use might drive that, make that more volatile. The Stormwater is a very stable revenue source. We can, pretty much any rate change, we can anticipate that that same percentage would occur on the revenues as well. So again, the key factor driving the Stormwater utility is the capital expenditures. And so these are the same projects and figures that were included in the CIP that's in front of you now. The CIP is also available online for the residents to see. And the key here is the flood mitigation that goes on. It's about the Fifth Down, Des Moines River flood mitigation improvements. You'll see the $19 million. These are in millions. So the 19 figure over the next four years is the project that we've talked about for the last couple of years, the need to improve levee systems, including bridge work as There's some share toward the bottom, a third from the bottom, the sanitary sewer projects. When we have a separation project where the pipe is carrying both sanitary and storm, those project costs are shared between the Stormwater utility and the sanitary. And so you'll see the $12 million that's funding out of the Stormwater to help separate those pipes, if you will.
Scott, on the streetscape projects, is that number the same as what it has been?
Yes. Understand that what occurs there is when a streetscape project matures and is ready to get going, we really have to shuffle the Stormwater scheduling to see if there's Stormwater needs associated with that particular streetscape improvement. Clearly, what we want to do is address the storm and sanitary at the same time, streetscape. So when you look at that streetscape project line, you need to understand that that's one that will change if there's a streetscape that moves up in the process and may need So in summary, on the Stormwater, it's the capital costs that are really driving the expenditures, which then has driven the rate increases. The rate increases you see here, 6% annually, was approved last year, so there's no additional council action necessary for that. The staff continue to look at efforts to combine with the sanitary and storm separation projects any efficiencies. And I've actually heard from engineering some innovative ideas about how to address the flood walls, especially as they come through downtown. So I know that research is underway as well. Any questions on the Stormwater? The last utility to address is the sanitary sewer. This also has 24 pump stations and about 890 miles of sewer lines. Again, the 90 or 91 shared positions with Stormwater, and then the operation of the WRA through that as well. The beginning balance was $4 million at the beginning of this year. We have about $34 million in revenues anticipated with the increase to $36 million. The increase in revenues in sanitary sewer is twofold, so this is the good news item for this morning. We have seen our usage in sanitary, or the water usage, go up in the last six months. It's obviously a product of the dry weather that we had through the summer and fall. So we had an increase in usage as well as the rate increase. Unfortunately, with the additional debt that needed to be issued last year and the additional debt that we'll be looking at next year, the expenditures will continue to climb. This is a situation similar to Stormwater, that the capital costs are driving the higher expenditures, and as such, the rate increases that are necessary. The capital costs in particular that have been of concern are the consent decree with the separation requirements, sanitary and storm. That obligation falls not only on the city, but on the WRA as well, for which we pay over 50% of those costs through our WRA membership. And so when you add those capital costs together, you're looking at $274 million in costs that were agreed to that need to be addressed.
Just, I just have to pause you on this one. This particular point about the long-term control plan, recall, this was, this is a federal mandate. This federal government essentially saying to us that you have to make these improvements and comply with federal clean water provisions. These are great improvements, they're very good, but they're very costly. And this one particular item, as much as anything else, is driving our expenses in the sanitary sewer account. So when we look at those rate increases that are occurring, not all of it, but much of it's related to this particular mandate that we've received and we've been working on. This is not news to you. We've talked about it before, but it continues to be a major factor in our capital funding for our sanitary sewer enterprise. I see Dave Miller back here and Pat Kozetsa. Both of them are intimately familiar with the issue and would be happy, I'm sure, to answer more questions about it if you have it. But this is, this is a very significant requirement that the city must comply with.
And as part of this borrowing that would be necessary for these projects, it's potential that we would be looking at a small borrowing yet later this year. Hopefully, that, with the timing, can be into next year, into the spring. Kind of some foreshadowing on the debt necessary for this. The sanitary sewer has the most challenges fiscally, and so I'd like to see that we continue with GO issuances for the sanitary and the Stormwater, having a healthier balance, if you will, probably taking on Stormwater revenue bonds moving forward and remove the GO backing from that. So you'll see those plans as we go through probably this summer and into fall. These are the projects that are listed in your CIP for the sanitary sewer. The last several items in the middle there that have the word separation in them are the ones that, again, we've mentioned as part of the $275 million. It's shaded a little better in print, but essentially, we're looking at about $25 million in separation projects over the next six years that are included in this plan. So that $55 million you see in yellow in the middle to the far right, that's the total of projects in the next six years, about $25 million. Nearly half of that is separation projects. So in summary, on the sanitary, again, we have the extensive capital costs that are necessary over the next six years. The rate increases that were approved a year ago were at 9% annual. What we'll see there is a small deficit that was shown in '14, and then on best projections, we would have a balanced budget in '15. So the small annual deficits would be removed by 2015. Again, sanitary sewer is very dependent on how much water usage takes place. So depending on how dry this summer and fall are, that can be very volatile. That swing can easily be 3/4 of a million dollars less if we have a very wet season. The last item to address is that on the council agenda for tonight, there is a setting of public hearings for our normal debt service paid GO bonds that will get issued later in May. This is a process called the pre-levee process, in which the bond council have asked that we make sure that the cities have the hearing taken place before you certify your budget that includes debt service payments associated with that new debt. There were some issues years ago with other cities, not with Des Moines, where their budgets would include large amounts of debt payments in their next budget, but they didn't have any authority to actually issue those bonds. And so they're kind of making sure they're keeping the horse in front of the cart here that before you do your budget, you've authorized at least the hearings for the debt that you intend to issue within the next fiscal year. So it's just the setting of the hearings. There's still flexibility to change those amounts when we go to issue the bonds in April and May. So that concludes the workshop presentations for all the budget items. The intent is to then have the budget hearing on the 25th, two weeks from now, from tonight, to approve the budget. Obviously, we're available for any questions throughout.
Thank you, Scott. In my role as mayor pro temp replacement, I move that we have a 15-minute break before we, just kidding, just kidding. We've got to lighten it up on the council, that's all. We will move to the city manager for a legislative update.
Thank you, Hallie. Councilmembers, Jeff Lester is going to handle the legislative update, but just as a reminder, this is sort of a new procedure this year. We're going to be doing legislative update at the council workshops, so the entire council in the community can hear the information presented. We're also going to talk about, and Jeff, I think will handle this as well, a, sort of a new procedure in terms of public notice for our legislative discussions that will occur with the Capitol on a weekly basis for a few months. So with that, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We're, I'll, I see the time's late, so I'll go quickly through what I have for you this morning. We're about halfway through February, and the legislative activity up at the Capitol has been somewhat slower quantitatively in terms of bills that have been introduced, but it is not really smaller or slower in terms of the impact that some of those bills may have on the city and what the city's trying to do in the city's business. I'll highlight just a few bills, and then, as Rick said, I'll talk a little bit about a new procedure that we're suggesting for council. The first bill I want to highlight in terms of impact would be House Study Bill 9. This is a family relationship and occupancy bill. This is probably the most impactful bill to date that's been produced up at the Hill and that has moved forward. It passed last week out of the House Judiciary Committee. This bill would effectively eliminate the city's home rule power to regulate occupancy in single-family homes based on familial or non-familial relationships. That's how most... That's how most of the state of Iowa regulates. This has been a big push. So for example, what this would do is say that the city can no longer use family as a basis for regulating, and instead, what happens is that every single-family home in the state of Iowa that's a rental property sits with the potential to become a boarding house or an apartment complex with an, with a somewhat less limited number of adult occupants, all with their own vehicles, all with their own agenda, all with their own timelines. House File Sixty is a local option sales tax bill. This revises the process for how local option sales taxes are put in place, as well as revises the allocation of how those funds are distributed. Currently, Iowa code provides for a system where the entire county has to vote and all contiguous cities have, have to vote for the entire county, and then the revenue is shared in a certain manner. This new bill would change that to votes within the city and individual cities would be able to vote, have a local option sales tax, and then they would retain a portion of the local option sales tax generated within the city and the county would retain those amounts generated in the unincorporated areas of the county. There are a number of ATE bills, Automated Traffic Enforcement camera bills that have been introduced. These range from complete elimination of the use of, of the Automated Traffic Enforcement to a requirement that certain criteria must be met before they can be used, but all the money going into the city's street construction fund, to a, for lack of a better term, ability to take and keep only the costs for the cities with the remainder in balance going to state uses and state funds. And we'll keep you apprised on, on those as they develop. Last bill I wanted to mention for you this morning is Senate Study Bill Eleven Twenty-One. This is a bill that would actually provide a state contribution for the four-eleven retirement system. This would equal three-point-seven-nine percent of the members' earnings and would also appropriate about nine-point-eight million dollars for the fund from the state. The state's contribution, however, could never reduce any city's contribution to less than seventeen percent. There are obviously more bills out there that are coming. Yes, ma'am?
No, go ahead. I, I guess, just, can you expand upon who is proposing and what's behind the rationale for particularly the first two bills?
Well, the, the first bill, the House Study Bill Nine on occupancy, that's been proposed by a number of landlord groups and rental groups and, and real estate groups. The idea obviously is to maximize profit. Staff has attended a number of these. Phil Delafield did a great job explaining the city's concerns and the problems that this would lead to, so far, to no avail, but it's, I mean, it was clear at, at those hearings that this is about money to be generated and maximizing the, the money that, that is going to come to them. There, there is a cloaking somewhat that it's a discriminatory practice and you're discriminating against a, a non, non-family people living together, but there were enough comments about money that I think that's really what it comes down to. And the local option sales tax, my understanding is that this was initiated or at least heavily endorsed by Waqee. Other cities, Corville and West Des Moines have also registered in favor of the bill. Obviously, it would eliminate a problem that's happened in some of the larger communities of not being able to get an entire countywide referendum pass, as well as concentrating the revenues that, that do arise.
Yeah. So have we, as a city, we have not registered on any of these bills, correct? I'm guessing, based upon the comments, that Phil Delafield was at the committee, that that would have been, we're opposed to that. Have we officially registered?
I, I'm not sure, Mrs. Hensley, if we've registered on that one. Our position, unless you direct otherwise, would be to oppose that particular one. The others were, were in a wait-and-see mode right now. If I could add, sure, Jeff, just two other things. There was discussion last year, and I think we did in fact, worked with some of our neighborhood leaders to have them augment commentary up at the legislature. I say two of them sitting right here, Marty and Joanne. And I know Joanne was very helpful last year in doing some of the work. That, that's really an appropriate strategy here, and it, it seems to me particularly on the bill about the single-family housing and the residential size. That's something that will have a very profound impact on our neighborhoods in the city. And if the council's willing, we'd like to reach out again to folks to see if they would be willing to provide commentary to legislators, particularly on that particular item. The other thing I wanted to say about House File Sixty, which is the sales tax piece, is that as it's currently drafted, and Jeff has already mentioned this, it is, it is not particularly advantageous to the city of Des Moines or other cities in a similar situation because of the way that it, it keeps the sales tax revenues within that particular city that votes it. However, it's conceivable that that language could be revised in such a way that it might in fact actually work for us. So what we'd like to do is just do some thinking about that with our own staff and then possibly run it by all of you, and if you're, if you're open to it, we might pursue some amendments to that proposal that would make it actually a, a positive thing to have on the books, should you want to pursue it at some point in the future.
Obviously, there's going to be a, a great number more bills that will come down the pike this year and we'll keep you apprised of those, but one of the things that, in talking with the city manager and some of you individually, that appears may be helpful in terms of council's participation in the legislative process going forward, would be to have a weekly council meeting posted up at the Capitol. Pick a, pick a day and time, Tuesday's at seven-thirty AM, for example. We would have a meeting up there to meet with legislators and legislative staff, as well as to have this discussion on bills that come maybe more rapidly and that are pretty important and that we could use your help on. To do that, obviously, we'd have to post an agenda. The members of the media and the public would be able to attend and we'd provide that information to them as well as to you. We understand that you're very busy and that there may be times when not everyone will be at every meeting up there, but our hope is that we would have enough to have a quorum each week. If not, then that'll be noted and in the minutes, we'll, we'll reflect that.
I, I like that idea. I think it's important that we're up at the Capitol. It just gives you the opportunity to interact and even as you see people walking through the cafeteria, to pull them aside and have one-on-one discussions. That's been very effective. But I'd like to see it on a Wednesday, which is what we've done previously, just because we have MAC meetings. I've got two Tuesdays in a row that I've got MAC meetings. And we, I think Chris Coleman, and you might want to just follow up with Chris, because I know he had some potential conflicts, but for the information of everybody, MAC is meeting tomorrow up at the Capitol and that is, you know, that would be open to anybody that would want to come. I'm not exactly sure who all will be there, but we'll want to go through and, and we'll have a summary of legislation that would be impactful to communities and really get a sense from other communities as to where they're at. But the lobbyists are also very involved and engaged in those discussions, as well as the League of Cities.
Does MAC have a room or something?
We do, and I'm, is it one sixteen?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Oh, behind the Senate chambers. Twenty-two behind the Senate chambers.
Seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty to eight-thirty.
So unless there's alternative thoughts, and we'll talk to those that aren't here, the mayor and Mr. Coleman and Mr. Meyer, we'll shoot for that Wednesday morning timeframe from seven-thirty to nine. The, the really positive thing about this process is if, if there are four or more of you up there and you're talking together, in this instance, you will have noticed that you don't run a follow-up committee law. And so that's really, I think, what we're trying to do is make sure we stay on the right side of that procedure. This process allows us to do that, but also gives you the freedom to be there and, you know, do your work legislatively.
I would just add too, on the citizen committee, that was very effective. I know Joanne really understands the system and had quite an impact up there, but, you know, it's, it's good for the legislative body to hear from citizens and understand the impact on neighborhoods. So I would really encourage us to pull that committee back together, look at it, you know, do we need to add some additional people or, you know, what worked, what didn't work, and how could we strengthen it? Because last year was the first year, but yet it was powerful.
Really appreciate that. Candy Reindell of my office is, is going to coordinate that process, so she'll be able to reach out to folks. And if you have an interest in doing it, obviously, there's folks here that aren't listening to this conversation, we'll reach out to them as well. But we, it, it is very valuable and Candy's going to be working with folks on that.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment, I think Wednesday morning's a very good time to meet. If we could find a different meeting location than we've had in the past, because it is so noisy at the base of that rotunda that it's, it's hard to hear from one end of that table to the other. I don't know if we could find a room there we could reserve on a weekly basis, but we need to find somewhere else up there if possible.
I, I would just offer, and others can chime in here, I, I agree, it's a very noisy environment and it's often difficult to have a conversation there. On the other hand, it's where a lot of people are, and so if one of your purposes is to reach out to legislators, you're more apt to run into them there than if you're, if you're closed up in a, a meeting room somewhere. The other problem is, I've noticed, and Candy would probably know more about it than I do, it's fairly difficult to get a meeting reserved when session is going on. We can look at all those options if you like, but it's going to be, it's going to be hard to do that. And there's some disadvantages if you're in a room somewhere, you just don't see people as well, and I know that's one of the purposes of it, Mr. Moore, but I appreciate your point.
Anything else? All right. Prior to closing our, our meeting, we'll open it up for any public comments. Yes, ma'am?
Joanne Hanover, one-four-zero-six, Rohey Road. I want to thank you for having this neighborhood notification meetings. We had an issue come up just late last week with a really good, big possibility to be built in the neighborhood. And then I discovered like on Friday that one of our small businesses was not going to be notified because he's across the street from the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot line that you draw for how far. And then I tried to go see him Friday afternoon and he wasn't in. So to my knowledge, this is someone that is going to be really affected by this new commercial building, which we are happy about, but I feel really bad for this person who is a small business owner and probably doesn't know what is happening around him. Not yet, he will eventually. And the other thing that I thought might be helpful is to, besides notifying the president of the neighborhoods, is possibly include the secretary, because if you have a president who's as busy as ours is, he might not get that. He does travel a lot and that could sit in his mailbox. So you might think about that as an alternative to send to both of them.
You know, I would add, Joanne, that's a great idea, because many times that's been the issue, is it stops. And if we could, if the, each neighborhood association could identify two or three people, maybe their executive committee that would be receiving the notices, hopefully, that would ensure that it gets out then, rather than just having it on the shoulders of one person.
I think we're very open, and I see Laura nodding her head. In fact, I think the principle is that we'd like to work with the neighbors in each association to have them tell us, who do you want to be contacted? So if it's the president and the secretary and the vice president or other people, I don't, I don't think that's a problem, so long as we know and we have the proper addresses. And it's particularly easy to do if there's email involved. If you have to send a letter, it's a little bit more difficult, but email, if that's the, if that's the way we're communicating, obviously, it's relatively easy to add multiple addresses. And so I think that's a great idea and we'll try to work with that as much as we can.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, yes.
Can I just, the privilege of one last comment. I want to introduce to all of you Amanda Hamm. Amanda, stand up. Amanda's our new management fellow in my office. Amanda just began about a week ago. She has a wonderful background. I won't go into all of it here and embarrass you, but I will say that one of her primary jobs is to support mayor and council. So those of you on the council will have a chance, I'm sure, to work with her in the coming months and years. So, welcome, Amanda.
Welcome aboard. All right, we will go ahead and conclude our meeting and we'll see you all back here this afternoon.